City Council meeting, January 27, 2014, 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Eggleton.
Here.
Gary Ellingson.
Here.
Chester Norakis.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Henry Quant.
Here.
And Wes Ryan.
Here. Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good evening. For all those interested, I would like everyone to know, I'm not going to hear any negative comments on the rain. As much as I enjoy the sunshine, all through December and January, we do need some rainfall. So unlike normal Oregonians, we're going to have to hold off the complaints of any kind of rain. So, thank you. Our next order of business is actually comments from citizens. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use a light system. Speakers may not yield their time to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a councillor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comments in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. As you do come forward, please state your name and address so it can be captured in the record. Thank you. And from the sign-up in the back, we have Mr. Warner. Jerry Warner.
Again, my name is Jerry Warner, O33 Lakewood, Mr. Mayor and Council. First of all, I want to thank the city manager and Richard Townsend to reply to my letter. The unfortunate thing about it is I had a meeting in Newport this morning, and I didn't get the letter until 2:00 this afternoon. I had a meeting at 3:00, so I hadn't had much chance to really go through the letter. However, I do want to make a few comments here that in regards to it. But anyway, the glass-blowing business operates, as Mr. Hawker stated, on a personal service contract for the city. The city gave them approximately $160,000 startup money for their equipment and remodel. The city, under a new contract, has allowed the business to go into direct competition with other shops on the coast, and this was approved in the new contract by the council. Under the new contract, the business pays for the 7,000-square-foot building, they pay 20 cents per square foot for the building. That is of this year, for 2014. And I'm sure you all realize that 85 percent of the floats distributed are made at other glass foundries in Oregon and Washington. So they make a minimal of them here. When Mr. Mahawker met with the owners of the parking lot adjacent to the Ballard Building, he said it was going to be an industrial business and only needed six parking places. I received a letter from Mr. Townsend, report. He said it was that that particular business was approved for the TVC use, which is the zoning, under Section L, Other Uses, which says "handicraft-type industries with on-site sales," such as crafts and saddles. Now, I'm having a hard time trying to figure out how a foundry could fit under that category because normally, the definition of a foundry is described as a process of heating raw material in a furnace to manufacture a product. And it doesn't seem to fit under there. However, I'm sure that maybe it can be construed by members of the city to allow such a thing. Anyway, like I say, I haven't had much time to really review this. I'm not going to challenge the parking lot tonight as parking requirements because I only received the letter and I didn't have time to research the parking. However, 17.56.070, more than one use, the parking shall be the sum total of the requirements of the various uses. Now, six parking places, yes. It's a glass foundry, it's a retail shop, it has special interest tours, it has meetings, it has school field trip, and classes all held in that building. The city is only six off-street parking places. However, according to Mr. Townsend's letter, he said that they had 58 on-street parking places within 200 feet. I have not had a chance to check that part out. Anyway, I do have a real concern about some of these things, and until I've had a chance to really review it, I'm going to say that I'll be back at another time. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Appreciate your scrutiny. Are there anyone else who didn't get an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak at this time? Seeing none. Council, I might point out that Mr. Warner's letter that he spoke of, we'll be making arrangements to have our response put on the LincolnCity.org website in approximately a week after an individual's back from vacation. But that way, we can share with the public as well the response to the original question. We have now the agenda item, Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda is, those items are considered routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any councillor may request that an item be removed for separate discussion and action. The Consent Agenda consists of, number one, minutes of meeting, January 13, 2014; number two, award of contract, Coast Wastewater Pump Station; and number three, purchase approval of two Ford Explorer police vehicles. Are there any requests to have items removed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to pull number three.
With that, entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda consisting of items one and two.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
With a nay, hearing none, thank you. Mr. Sprague, number item three, purchase approval of two Ford Explorer.
I just noticed that we're using SUVs now as police vehicles, and I was just wondering about the rollover propensity. It seems to me that in the crash results and that sort of thing, we've heard that SUVs are more prone to rolling over, and I'm just wondering why we're going to SUVs.
I'll give you a few reasons, but I'll invite the chief to come up and talk to you about that a little bit, too.
Okay.
The big change, and I'm going to ask the chief to correct me as I'm wrong, please. But it changed when they stopped making a police package in the Ford.
Crown Vic.
Crown Vic. And the vehicle that they came up with as the alternative, we tried one, and it wasn't working very well. First of all, a lot of our officers couldn't fit in it with their gear to start with. We looked at fuel efficiency, and the fuel efficiency of the SUV was just real close, like a half mile per gallon, different from the sedan model that was too small. And we were having difficulty with the amount of equipment that they carry in the smaller sedan. As to rollover, my thought on that is we don't do many if any high-speed chases. But I stand corrected if you want to correct me, please.
No, everything that the city manager said is accurate. We tried the Ford Taurus, which was the sedan platform. I believe that it was ordered a year before I was hired here, so two years ago, and the vehicle does not work out very well at all. It's difficult to get in and out. The pillar leans forward from the front seat, so actually, an officer needs to basically make a U-turn to negotiate that pillar to get into the seat. The seat sits further back than the doorway allows. And then with all the gear, it just gets hung up in that very small threshold in that doorway. So we looked at the SUV. The Ford Explorer SUV for a police vehicle, although it is an SUV, it's a low-profile type, so it doesn't sit up as high as a typical SUV does, and it's also pursuit-rated. There's only two SUVs on the market, I believe, that are pursuit-rated. It's the Ford Explorer Police Interceptor, and then the Chevy Tahoe Police Package. So they are police vehicles. We're not taking a standard passenger vehicle and trying to make something that they're not intended to. They're full police package deals, heavier-duty suspension, the brakes are increased for more efficiency and such. And we don't get up to the speeds, like Mr. Hawker indicated, that we don't have those typical high-speed pursuits, or if we do, there are far and few in between. In fact, I don't think we've had any since I've been here, as far as typical high-speed pursuits.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I noted in the write-up, just again for the public, both these vehicles have over 100,000 miles, and if I'm recalling correctly, we have a policy of rotating vehicles after some, I was thinking 70,000 or so miles.
If that's been the target, we haven't been able to achieve that.
Right. And so they're well past.
And you can't compare that to the 100,000 miles on one of our own vehicles because when they are running traffic or when they're writing reports, the unit is idling, the unit is running. And those hours are a lot harder on it, well, harder than driving, but they add up on engine miles, and a police vehicle with 100,000 miles on it is not good for another 100.
It may say 100,000 miles on the speedometer, but it's actually about 135,000, 140,000-mile engine wear and tear, like, you know, with all the idling and stuff that they do.
I guess what I wanted the public to hear is that just because it may be a year, we don't change cars because of a year model has come in that we have standards in. So it really doesn't matter how many vehicles we have, we turn them at a mileage.
Right. Yeah, the only extra cost of having more vehicles is the equipment cost, not the vehicle itself. It's simply a function of miles. You buy a vehicle, you bought so many miles.
And the idea, then, is to pass what these vehicles replace will go into auction?
Well, unfortunately, the state is no longer willing to do that. And our past experience, when we tried to sell vehicles, we tried it with an auction, a local auction, that didn't work. We tried a silent auction to where people come in, review it, write their number down, and then the next person comes in and writes the higher number down. That didn't work. Everybody seems to think, if government sells something, they're going to get it for 10 bucks. We're a little bit of a loss to know how to surplus vehicles since the state won't take them. And the state was doing a great job for us. And I don't know why they've stopped. So they were putting them on eBay, and they put, I guess they had a good enough reputation to get good prices. We may be looking for a contractor to do eBay for us, put all the service records or make all the service records available, because we furnish all those, we disclose everything that we know of that's wrong with the vehicle, and we need a new way to do this. It's going to, I guess this is coming back to you when we surplus them, that you'll declare them surplus. I may or may not have a good plan by then. I'll try.
All right. Please.
Chief, are we able to recycle the equipment off the old vehicles and put it on the new?
Yes. I believe all of the vehicle will be stripped and added into the new vehicles. There's an issue that's coming up. Windows XP is no longer going to be supported after April of this year. We have two MDCs that are not Windows 7 capable of upgrade, and I'm still doing the research on one, if it's just a motherboard replacement for the computer and will be good, or if we need to update the whole computer. And right off the top of my head, I don't know if those two computers are actually in these two vehicles that we're recycling out. But it's the intent to, that's kind of a side issue, that's a long way to answer your question, is, yes, we're recycling the equipment, but this caveat is, you know, something that we have to look at aside. Thank you.
Any other questions? Entertain a approval to purchase the two Ford Explorer police vehicles?
So moved.
So good.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay?
I'm sorry, we do need a roll call.
Roll call because of the money?
Ellingson.
Yes.
Norakis.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Eggleton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on, we have a special order of business. We have an appointment to the Transit Room Tax Committee. Myself and councillor Quant interviewed Terrell Rathbun, and she's been on the Transit Room Tax Committee and asked to be reconsidered for an extension. We interviewed her, and both of us separately have made the recommendation to do such. Any comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Having served on this committee with Terrell before coming on the council, she is very knowledgeable, works very hard to make sure that she has all the information. She is a very good asset on this committee, so I would highly recommend her.
Thank you. With that, any other comments? Entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of appointing Terrell Rathbun to the Transit Room Tax Committee.
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay, hearing none, thank you. We have Oregon Department of Transportation, Nell Scott Highway 101 update. Let staff soften the blow for, you know.
Staff's going to warm up the crowd for ODOT.
We'll get this out of the way first.
Yeah, we're warming up ODOT. So, good evening. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the utility relocation costs that the city is going to be responsible for, and is part of the Nell Scott project. As you all know, the Oregon Department of Transportation is finalizing the plans, getting ready to bid our Nell Scott Highway Improvement Project, and the city is responsible for relocating our utilities so they're not in the way of the new project. Originally, we had budgeted, this budget number has been in the, has been a place saver number for a while. We thought this work, relocating the utilities, would run us about $420,000, and that was the budget number. Really, that was based on very limited information. As we got more information in August, and the plans were provided by ODOT to us, identifying the utility conflicts and the number of utility conflicts, we raised our estimate. However, following the utility conflict notification, we've done a detailed estimate now, an engineer's estimate, and as we've completed the design, we've got, we're going to incur, we anticipate, our estimate is that our costs are going to be higher than that $700,000. So I'm going to break it down, where those costs are going to come from, and the city's relocation work is divided into two projects. One project we need to do ourselves, and that is ahead of ODOT's contractor and construction work. That project was originally, that work originally, well, at one point, that work was going to be included in ODOT's project. And so we were pretty comfortable with that scenario because the cost was going to be realized after, you know, the project was well underway with ODOT, after the bids came in for the ODOT contractor, and we thought it was going to be quite a bit less if we went ahead ourselves and did the work. Well, anyway, that didn't work out to the degree that we were hoping, ODOT felt it was better for them to only do some of our relocation work in their contract. So we were left with about roughly 70 percent of all the relocation work needed to be done by the city. So that's the work I'm talking about first. That's a project that we designed and is currently in bid, is being advertised. We have about eight plan holders, we have eight viable plan holders to date, eight contractors that could do the work, a few other of the plan holders are subs and services. So that's, that bid is due Thursday, this Thursday. So we'll know more on the 30th exactly what that number is. But when we did the budget, we did the engineer's estimate and compared that to the budget numbers, this contract work that I'm talking about, our engineer's estimate is about $1.1 million, which obviously exceeds the budget and the even updated estimate. So we're going to talk more about that later, and the finance department is working on ways to help us cover that work. I'm hoping our engineer's estimate is high, and it is. I mean, it's definitely got some contingency in there, and we had our consultant engineer do an estimate and our in-house staff engineer do an estimate. So those numbers came in pretty close. That's as comfortable as we can be. After we bid this work, after we award this work, we will also have about 30 percent of the city's relocation work will be done in ODOT's contract. And that's the subject of the reimbursable work that is in the agreement that ODOT's going to talk about later. So the first work is the city's relocation project, we're going to award it, we're going to open the bids on Thursday, we're going to come back to you first week, the first meeting in February, hopefully with a good bid and a request to award to a bidder. Then, when that work is completed, ODOT will have already bid their job, and we'll have a better idea on what those costs for the city's portion of ODOT's project is. So we'll have a lot more accurate numbers, real numbers, to come back to you with. So are there any questions?
Our bid is this Thursday?
Yes, Thursday.
As I've mentioned to council, that alternatives and how we can pay for this work is a little bit complicated, and rather than schedule that for a council meeting, and we weren't ready to do that for tonight, or we would have, based on the size of the agenda, we probably would have. I was hoping that council would be willing to do a workshop next week, perhaps in the afternoon, perhaps on Monday, but your call. It would probably be somewhere between 60 and 90 minutes, we'd go through a couple of the alternatives, how it fits into our other plans for water and sewer and so on, and I think you need to know all of that in order to select the best way to pay for this. And also, we're hoping that ODOT can find ways to help us out a little bit on this, and waiting to hear back on that part of it, and maybe we'll know more on that next week. So my recommendation to you is to look at your calendars for next week. I'd propose next Monday afternoon, but staff is at your pleasure whenever you'd like to do it.
I know Henry has trouble in the afternoon, oh, Monday afternoon, oh, that's right. Anybody else have a conflict with Monday afternoon? Or are you? You'll be gone.
Bug.
You're all right on this next Monday afternoon?
Yep.
So after 2:30? Wes?
Oh, I don't work on Monday.
Oh, so you're okay as well? Okay.
Yeah.
Your pleasure.
What works best?
3:00?
2:00?
2:00.
2:00's good for me.
2:00. 2:00 on Monday?
Monday the 3rd, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for that. It'll help staff to get prepared for that and to be able to concentrate on one item.
Yes, Gary?
Just quickly, I read over everything in a couple of memos that we had, and I thought I kind of understood this until right now, which is, no, you made a nice presentation, thank you. I just probably am not. I get the part, there's two different utility moving efforts, one before the work starts for ODOT and one during that work. And so the preliminary one, we had an initial cost estimate of a little over $400,000, just a guesstimate.
Yes.
But now that might be as high as a million dollars.
Or more.
Or more.
The 420, that budget number, what was our budget for this year for moving?
We didn't have any idea what conflicts.
No, I'm not.
We were going to have. Well, just so you understand, that was a placeholder.
Yeah.
The conflicts were more than we imagined, and the most recent information, and it's gone up as, but the most recent information is we could be looking at 1.8 million.
I want to be perfectly clear, I'm not asking, I'm not criticizing, or, I know we're just doing the best we can do based on the moment in time, but what is a possible estimate for the ODOT part of the work?
So the estimate for ODOT's work is, ODOT estimated 532,000, we estimated 685,000 for the same work, so we're in that kind of ballpark, but that doesn't include engineering, that's just the construction cost. So, yeah, that's what we're looking at for the ODOT relocation portion.
And when you say that, Stephanie, what we're referring to is that 30 percent that would be done by ODOT in their.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
I'm curious, are we relocating or are we constructing new? Because that was all brand-new.
We're relocating. We're not adding.
So we're not buying new pipe, we're picking up that pipe and moving it?
Well, we're buying some new pipe, we can't reuse some of this. And only a portion was within the original project design. So the original project that we relocated for ended at 32nd?
29th.
29th. Okay, this project goes well south of 29th.
Okay.
Okay, so that, we're not touching that twice, as far as redoing that twice. There is a portion of that work, and we guesstimated about $350,000, but that's just without running hard numbers, that we're doing, that could have been done, avoided, had we known the current plans at that time.
Okay, so I guess I'm weak and confused on, so are we talking about the south end of what we've already done, being somewhat relocated? I mean, we started at 23rd and went to 29th.
The relocations go from where to where?
Well, the relocations go throughout the length of the project, from 23rd to 36th. The portion that we've already done. The portion that we've already done, or that we did in the 'oh-five relocation, was really only from, that was only from nineteenth to twenty-ninth. The amount, the, the work affected by this project is, oh, gosh, what was it, how many feet? It was, it was from about twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth. So, was it that end of the, of that work?
That's right, south end of what we've already done.
Correct, right.
And the, the rest of it is on past that, south of there.
Correct.
To thirty-fifth.
To thirty-fifth, yeah.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to clarify, because it sounded like we were going back and relocating what we've already just, we did in 'oh-five, and that's what was
Some of it, yeah.
confusing me. But I can understand that, that south portion from twenty-seventh because of the, the new design.
Correct.
Okay, that makes it a little bit better in my brain.
Gary, did you get your, are you okay with your questions?
Yeah. Ironically, I think I understood it.
Okay.
And then I did, I'm going back to my first position.
Good.
I do, I do get it.
All right.
So, thank, and thank you for all of your time. I didn't mean to burn it out.
No, it's confusing.
So, then we'll get the, the financing work through on, at the work session?
Right, and by then, we'll know what our portion, pretty much, although it's still going to be a little bit soft, because isn't there some contingencies that we don't know? Is there AC pipe that could be involved?
Right, there are, there, yeah, there's still some contingencies and, well, it, yeah, there's some what-if, some worse.
We'll have a pre, a much better idea than we have tonight, okay?
That, that number actually, ODOT's number looks pretty good. It includes some of the contingencies already, so, like you say, we'll get more detailed at the workshop.
All right, thank you, Stephanie.
Thanks.
Do you want to introduce, oh, well, they can, I think you're all well-known.
The Amy and Jerry Show. It sounds like a radio morning talk show or something. Welcome.
Thank you.
Why don't you introduce yourself to the public?
I'm Amy Ramsdale, I'm the ODOT Area Manager. I cover Lynn Benton and Lincoln Counties.
My name is Jerry Wolcott, I'm the project leader, and I work out of Carvalis.
Thank you.
We can approach this in a couple of different ways. I have a construction update, a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
If we are ready. That would be fine. And that's just to give you an idea of what's coming up in the next month or two.
Okay.
And then, we can go back and answer any questions that you have about the design. And I think next on the agenda is the IGA, and we'd be willing to answer questions on that, too.
I'm, I'm really having difficulty hearing you.
Sorry, let me speak a little closer.
Thank you.
So, the presentation that I have tonight is to give you an idea of the construction efforts that are happening and what to expect over the next month or two. And then, if you like, we can follow up on that with any questions that you have about how we got to this point. And I think next on the agenda is the intergovernmental agreement, and we can answer questions on that, too.
Great, thank you.
So, in case folks don't know what this project is about, it's a, it is a modernization project. It's designed to improve the safety and operations of US 101 between Twenty-third Street and Thirty-Fifth Street. We'll improve the intersection at Thirty-second Street by realigning those two legs that are not, that are currently offset. We'll install a signal there, crosswalks, illumination. We'll also improve the bike facilities, the pedestrian facilities will be greatly improved, and also the ADA facilities there, too. We'll have drainage and landscaping included in this, and we have enjoyed a very cooperative development with the city over the last couple of years, and we've worked hand-in-hand with them, and we've been very pleased with that relationship. So, what's coming in the next couple of months, what we need to do is tree and brush clearing to avoid nesting birds. We're required by law to either remove the shrubs that are growing there now before the first of March, or go through those shrubs before we do take them down and clear them of all nesting birds. So, it's less expensive and it's easier on the environment for us to do that now. So, that's what you'll be seeing, quite a few folks out there doing some marking with survey work, and then you'll see some brush, brush clearing. We'll have utility relocate starting here in the next couple of weeks that are not part of the ODOT contract. And then, the, we were hoping it was going to be house-moving, but it'll actually be demolition of the two houses up on Dune Street. And then, after that, construction in the spring. So, brush clearing equipment, you can expect to see all kinds of stuff, chainsaws, brush cleaners, handwork, sometimes some larger equipment, depending on the trees. Some of the trees, as I understand it, are fairly large and are fairly close to some buildings. And so, we'll have to have some professionals in there to cut those trees down and make sure we don't cause more problems than we're solving. Following that, you'll also see utility relocation. Gas lines will be moved, sewer and sanitary lines will be moved, water, electrical and cable. And these are all, all utilities that are permitted in ODOT right-of-way. So, the ODOT right-of-way is our first, these utilities occupy that space with the agreement that if they do bump into a project in the future, that they'll relocate. So, that's what they're doing right now. We've given them plans and conflict notices about where they would be in conflict, and they'll be moving those utilities out of the way before we start the project. You'll see all kinds of different equipment out there, because they are moving gas lines and electric lines, power lines and cable, and then also the, the water and sanitary lines, too. There's going to be a lot of work out there. Unfortunately, we are going to be demolishing the houses on Dune Street. We were hoping that we could recycle those houses. The contract didn't work out with the contractor, and the timeline is so short now that we would have a difficult time finding somebody else to recycle those materials. So, we're going to have to tear those, both of those houses down, and they'll come down fairly quickly. The primary thing that you'll see in the first year is the culvert and retaining wall construction. There's a big culvert underneath 101 at Twenty-Ninth Street, and there's also retaining walls on both sides of the highway. And so, you'll see staging of traffic, and that means we'll move traffic all the way over to one side, and then we'll do construction on the other. And then, when that's done, we'll move the, we'll stage it and move the traffic back to the other side, and then do the other half of the highway. So, there's going to be a lot of moving back and forth. There'll be temporary closures on Twenty-Ninth Street and Thirty-second Street, not at the same time. That's primarily because of this culvert installation. So, the culverts are big, we'll be making them fish-passable. They'll look kind of like this, only probably quite a bit bigger, longer, at Twenty-Ninth Street and at Thirty-second Street. We expect two years of construction. It's a tight timeline right now. There's a lot of work to be done, but we believe that the contractor can squeeze it into two years. It'll be mostly day work with some night work. We will keep two lanes open during the day. If we do reduce it to a single lane at night, there'll be, it'll happen between seven PM and six-thirty AM, and not on Fridays, Saturdays, and then likely into Sundays. And we'll avoid holidays, too. As far as business access, we'll beginning our outreach, we'll be beginning our outreach to the local businesses on the fourteenth. We have a meeting right here. We'll be going through basically this presentation, and we'll have representatives from our construction office who will come in and talk to them about how we're going to deal with keeping access open to businesses during these two long years. The construction team's going to work with them to minimize those impacts, and they've done a great job in the past, and I'm sure they'll do a great job in the future. The people that we, that we bring into Lincoln City are the best that we have. You'll see something like this where there are blue cones and signs to mark business access. It's still, it's still a construction zone, but it'll be, it'll be open for business, and people will know that they are open for business. Information and updates prior to the commencement of work, forty-eight hours prior to that, we'll have door hangers dropped off on the properties within five hundred feet of the project limits. And also, people can go to our website and get updates. They can also get up to, if signed up for an E-letter, which is an email letter that will shoot to them with construction updates periodically. And you can do that there on the website, too. Can I answer any questions about what's coming up?
Here?
Yes.
The utilities that you say you're moving cable and gas and all those, are they, are the wire utilities going underground, then?
None of the utility, the electric wires that are under, that are above ground will be relocated underground. It's pretty expensive, and they're going to keep them above.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Jerry, with the new culverts going in, will that increase the water flow further downstream?
Good question. The, what'll happen is that the, the culverts will be made larger, they'll be able to handle the water that flows through there. And so, and during high-water events, if the current culverts would have constricted the flow, this would let more water flow through there. But at the same time, the hydraulics engineers have looked at the downstream measurements to see if that would affect any of the downstream property owners, and they say that they won't.
Yeah, because I'm one of the downstream, and it gets high right now.
Yeah.
You know, I just hope that somebody has looked at that, because it seems to me if you make it bigger on one end, and the other end is still the same size, then trouble could happen.
Yeah.
I'll give you a call at that time.
Please.
Could I have your home phone number?
Well, that raises a question. Gary, you introduced yourself and project manager, but that does, the question is, you're not on-site, are you, or how often are you on-site for projects like this?
That's a good question. So, I'm a project leader for the development side of the project. So, once it goes to construction, we hand it off to our construction office, and there's a project manager who's in charge of that. And then, you will have people on-site from our construction office that are more well-versed than I am as far as working the construction issues and working with business owners and property owners to, to address any concerns.
And Gary, we'll get those guys' names.
Yes.
Yes, that will be part of the coordination, is to make sure you know who our inspectors are
Great.
and who our project manager is. And so, we are actually hiring a retired ODOT project manager on a temporary basis just for this project. He has over thirty years of experience working up and down the Oregon coast on similar construction projects. So, you're getting one of the best construction project managers ODOT has had.
Great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is not a criticism or whatever, it's just a statement. I drive through that area on my way back and forth to work. I know of at least thirty-five times that that area has been, has been surveyed, and you just made the comment that they're going to be coming in and surveying again. And I'm going, can't you use any of those surveys? There are ODOT crews that are doing the surveying.
Mm-hmm.
And I can't imagine that you need to continue to survey.
Yeah, that's a really good question.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
So, part of what we do, we survey in the beginning to do our design work. It's been several years since that has happened. And so, prior to construction, our survey crews go out and take what's called confidence points to make sure that nothing has changed, nothing has moved, and that the edge of the pavement is still where the edge of the pavement was when we began design. We do that to help us with payment and measurement, to make sure that our quantities are what we really think they're going to be. In some cases, there's a great deal of change between the time we originally survey the project and the time we actually go to construction, especially if you travel on any of our highways going back and forth through areas that have slides. There's minor pop-outs and things that our maintenance crews fix between the time we take the original design survey and the time we actually go to construction. So, that's part of why we're going back out again. You can add to that.
Because it was just surveyed, two weeks ago. There was a survey crew.
Yeah, well, there's, there's two different survey things that have been happening in the last year. So, one of them is when we know what the impacts would be to a particular property, we mark that off, so those are right-of-way acquisition areas. And so, the right-of-way, the, the right-of-way agent can come out with the property owner and say, this is the area that we're going to be purchasing from you, or that we need a temporary use from. And so, you've probably seen them come out to mark those areas. We've more recently had people coming out to mark the bird clearing areas, which are different than anything else that we've marked out. So, there's areas where we're clearing brush as we're acquiring property. And so, they're going to come out as we get a property acquired, and they're going to mark off that property's, the limits of what we're going to do, the brush clearing. And since we don't, we're not getting them all at once, we're having this crews come out and do it a little at a time, so that there's not a huge push to get that done, because we have kind of a tight timeline to get the bird clearing done.
I was just curious. It just seemed
Yeah.
very, very odd.
It's a good question.
You know.
Other questions from council? Now, did I hear the fourteenth of February is you're actually meeting with business? Is that the right date here?
Yes, that's correct.
And kind of walking through the process with businesses in the Nell Scott area?
Right, we'll bring, roll out maps, and we'll bring this presentation and walk through it with them. And then, just open it up to questions from residents and business owners, if they want to come out and just chat with our construction office. That'll be the good time to do that.
Good. Counselor?
Jerry, is there any chance that ODOT would change its mind again and include the relocates in your bid package?
No, not at this point. We, it, there's, there's three months' worth of work to be done, and with our current bid let on February twenty-seventh, we know that, given that we, given that we would do a notice to proceed about forty-five days after that, we have two full years of construction. And so, if we shift that three months' worth of work over to that project, we'd have to redesign our bid package, we'd have to delay the bid let, and then we'd have to include that in there, knowing that it would become a three-year construction project rather than two. So, it's really too late for us to do that.
I'm sorry to hear that. Okay.
Other questions? Amy?
IGA, and so, do you want to talk about the IGA?
And the, the, is that the amendment?
Did you?
Oh, what is? That's the, essentially, the utility relocate agreement, and that's primarily the subject of our workshop. We'll presume we'll be able to put something on the next agenda, where I have to take exception. Again, we're hoping that, that ODOT can help us in some manner reduce this cost to the city. The one thing that I don't think that we're going to be able to do, although we haven't examined all of the alternatives yet, I don't think we're going to be able to put cash up front on this. And my feeling is the city's credit is as good as it gets, and if we sign that contract, we'll pay. So, there is a provision in the proposed agreement that calls for us to either get a letter of credit or prepay some amount. A letter of credit, we've checked on, they're extremely expensive. It's just simply a waste of money as far as I'm concerned and a lot of process. If, my, my feeling is if council authorizes us to sign that contract, we'll pay what it says, but not prepay it.
But at this point, we're delaying the IGA until after we have this report?
Right, we'll have it on the next meeting.
Right.
Okay.
We can deal with that, okay?
And so, just, Councilor Ryan asked a question about the utilities that were located during the design-build contract in the kind of the Gap area. We are working with our statewide utility program manager. We will also have to work with the Department of Justice. They will have the final say. But, it's our belief in Region Two that that might qualify for a second move consideration. Our design-build contractor indicated where you should place the utilities in hopes of avoiding a conflict, and now, as we're coming in and finalizing this project, although it's considered a different project, in our mind, it's the same one. We sat here in 'oh-six and agreed to delay the work so that we had time to work out utility conflicts. We've changed the design considerably over the last several years, working collaboratively with staff, and we really don't want to jeopardize that newfound partnership that we have. So, we'll work with our program manager to see if we can't get those utilities that appear to be a second move reimbursed. We've also talked a little bit about there are opportunities for low-interest loans. Not sure about the timeline with that. But again, David mentioned earlier that it's very complicated. We can't use Highway Trust Fund dollars. Typically, when we provide low-interest loans to communities, we take repayment out over time from your Surface Transportation Fund allocation that ODOT gives, also Highway Trust Fund dollars. So, if there was a different funding source that the city had to repay a low-interest loan, if you don't have the funds available, that's something, too, that we could work with you on, and we would try to work with our staff on the timelines. But our goal is to not delay the project any further than it already has been.
Agreed, that's a joint, yep. Okay?
And there's just one thing with regards to the IGA. Right now, we won't be able to go, we won't be able to let the project without that agreement. So, we'd like to work and do whatever we can to resolve any issues or questions that you have about that.
And, yeah, I guess that, we won't have those, or we're, we're working those out, and we'll get them, you know, as soon as, as you've been helpful all the way along, and we've attempted to feed, you know, our observations and concerns along the way, so we'd continue with that. Great.
Okay.
And thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, we have a request for continuance to February tenth, two thousand and fourteen. This is Council deliberations regarding the vacation rental dwelling legislative amendments, the yes/no. This was continued from October twenty-fifth, and at that time, we had stated late January. Their request is to continue it until our next meeting, which is February tenth.
Do you need a motion to do that?
Yes.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to continue. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a no. Hearing none. Thank you. City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of items. One, many of you and many of the audience may have watched Channel Four along the way at different times. There's two things, well, Channel Four, Lincoln City, is a government-access channel. The only things that we put on there are things that either we produce or things that other governments produce. It's not a public-access channel. We don't have the staff resources to manage a public-access channel. And it's been a government-access only for, I don't know, ten years. We have a bulletin board that runs on that channel a lot, and it's really a challenge to keep things current on there. And we have, we have a lot of things on there that I'm not sure are all that valuable. And the visitors don't really, for the most part, get a chance to see it because most of the larger establishments, multi-room establishments, have preempted Channel Four with their own information about their hotel or some such thing. So, we don't capture many visitors. There's only so many times I believe that we can run the sustainability and run the library, and the things that we produced five years ago are still running. I'm thinking in terms of maybe that doesn't make as much sense anymore, particularly in view of our emphasis on our website. Maybe we should just run meetings, meeting after meeting after meeting, so that people can watch the current, the last meeting whenever they want, or the last couple of meetings whenever they want. And only put on announcements that are, that are really important. I'd like some comment, both from the public to council and from the council, about that. So, if you have an opportunity, I would ask you maybe to take a look at what runs on Channel Four. I think you have to look for a long time to see a whole, go all the way through and see if you think it's really worth it. And I'd like to hear from the public out there. Does anybody watch this stuff besides the meetings? And it costs staff time to try to keep that current. And to be honest with you, we're not. We're not keeping it current. We're doing a lot better in keeping our website information current. And the VCB does an excellent job of keeping their site, which links to our regular site, current with events and all kinds of things. I wonder if we really need a bulletin board that tells people about events that, that's readily available on the website. And not everybody has Charter cable, so we're losing that part of the audience, too. Anyway, I, I'll put this on for more discussion sometime in the future. But in the meantime, if anybody has any comment, I really would appreciate it. My email is davidh@lincolncity.org, and my phone number is nine-nine-six-twelve-hundred. I'd sure like to hear, is anybody out there using this stuff?
I wonder if it'd be worthwhile, and are we capable of putting announcement on that actual bulletin?
We could.
And maybe suggesting, you know, if you're reading this, viewing it, you know, call or something, and some kind of a designated period of time just to see.
I think we probably can do that.
Something that, you know, not to my number, of course.
Okay. I was just.
Yeah, you were eager to put it to the mayor's number. But some way to capture, I think you raise a good point. The other that you stated, the meetings would just run more frequently, not that you'd be able to call them up or have on-demand or.
Right, you have that on the, on the Internet. They would just run maybe back-to-back or maybe two or three meetings' worth. And the trick to that would be, can we run a trailer or whatever you call it on, on the screen that shows what meeting you're watching?
Yeah, the date.
Otherwise, you have to run just the current meeting.
Yep. Hear you.
So, but we also have an occasional county meeting that we can put on there. We have Devil's Lake Water Improvement meetings that are on there. We have our renewal meetings that can be on there. And I honestly think, I could be wrong on this, I think there's more interest in the meetings than there is in the bulletin board.
Right. I think you're right. And based, again, on our tracking of the website viewing of the meetings.
Right.
And I suspect that most people have moved to that venue so they can call it up on-demand.
Right. So, and then I had one other item that I would like to delay until later in the meeting. My belief is that we've adjourned from executive session, that we, we're going to have another executive session before this meeting concludes, brief executive session. And I would suggest doing that after Item J, adjourn for, for the continuation of the previous executive session for a brief period, maybe fifteen or twenty minutes, and then come back here. And then I would have potentially an item that I, an action item that I would ask for.
Okay, I'm just wondering if there are any citizens, you know, maybe after K, so I could take maybe citizen comments or something, but.
You could do it, yeah, you could do it after K, sure.
Okay, just so they wouldn't be having to wait around.
Right.
Okay. That's, yeah, go ahead, Chester.
Mr. Hocker, I apologize. I should have had this question earlier on the agenda regarding the equipment for the police cars. I noticed that we've got budgeted fourteen thousand dollars for, to equip the cars.
Some of it's obsolete.
So, we're going to be recycling some in some camps.
Yeah, that's, that's right. And, and I actually have to correct the chief a little bit on that item. I think some of the old or older equipment is not compatible.
Right.
What is compatible, we absolutely recycle. But some of it just gets obsolete or worn out.
Right. Thank you.
Great. And that's it?
That's it, Mayor.
That's it. Mr. Pacello, I would like to give you a chance as well.
I do have one item, and it's on your dais here. You have a First Amendment to the Cooperative Improvement Agreement, Number twenty-eight-nine-nine-seven. This is the U.S. one-oh-one, Southeast Twenty-third to Southwest Thirty-Fifth Street, Lincoln City section. You heard Allison during the urban renewal meeting talk about the fact that we would, this project was ongoing, and they were looking at a May one completion date. The actual agreement with ODOT two-eight-nine-nine-seven says that the completion date is January thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. So, the, this amendment is to essentially reflect the agreement that they've made with ODOT to extend the time from January thirty-first to May one. So, I'd ask for a motion authorizing the mayor to sign this agreement, which simply extends the deadline for the city to complete the parking lot as well as the sidewalk referenced in Agreement two-eight-nine-nine-seven.
I would say move.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any discussion, questions? And that's, in my reading, that was all it was, was the extending the date for the parking lot in Southeast Thirty-Fifth, or, yes, Southwest Thirty-Fifth. We have a, no other questions? We have a motion with a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay. Hearing none. Thank you. Okay, we then have ordinances. Ordinance Number two-oh-one-four-dash-oh-one, this is second reading.
Your Honor, this is second reading of Ordinance two thousand and fourteen-dash-oh-one, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title Nine, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare, Chapter nine-point-oh-four, General Provisions, Updating Adoption of State Criminal and Violation Codes and Procedures, and Adding Violations.
Any questions from council? We had a lot of discussion last meeting on this as we went through the first reading.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt Ordinance Number two thousand and fourteen-dash-oh-one on the second reading.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance two thousand and fourteen-dash-oh-one. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's roll call. Thank you. Jump the gun here.
Pont.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Hagleton.
Ellingson.
Yes.
Norakis.
Yes.
Enspray.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we have Ordinance Number two-oh-one-four-dash-oh-two. This would be first reading.
Okay, this ordinance was here for a possible first reading. However, I'm going to ask that we not do first reading on this. I just guess we need some kind of head nod from the council that we're going in the right direction. What we're attempting to do is to narrow and clarify the special events ordinance. One of the areas that's been of concern has been the requirement for insurance for some of these events. So, we actually have set up a meeting with City-County Insurance Services, which will be sometime next week. So, there, that may, in fact, cause some changes to this, which would require me to read them aloud if, if we do first read it tonight. The other, the other matter that, you know, this ordinance attempts to do is to not require two permits from the city when you can just require one. So, that's why we want to narrow the special events to actually include only those things that need to be included. Some other permits, like permits that we typically issue to use a park facility, could adequately address the issues that are addressed in a special events permit. They need not go through the VCB director if they're being handled at the community center with a permit there. So, that's the general direction we're going. But because we have this meeting set up with CCIS, and I have some other issues about consistency of this ordinance with zoning code, I'd ask it, you know, if you have any questions, please throw them out there, but that's the direction we're going, and we hope to be able to bring it back in two weeks with some more clarity.
There's a little, little extra. To me, there's only two reasons to even have a special event permit requirement. One is if it's going to put a burden on public services that we need to plan for, manage, charge for, whatever. And a big event can do that. The second reason would be is if it places an unusual amount of risk on the city to where insurance would become a consideration. Well, and that's also a public part of, public safety. So, extra services, public safety, risk has to reach a threshold, to me, before it's worth having a special event. And so, we're trying to craft this so that it doesn't, it doesn't encompass anything anybody wants to do. We don't want to go there. And a broad reading of the current requirement is you do anything unusual at all and have a barbecue in your backyard, and you're going to get a special event, almost. We don't want to do that. So, this is a little bit tricky, and we're trying to work through it. In the meantime, we've got people who are going to want to run special events. We're trying to use our best judgment on those. This ordinance can be, the existing ordinance can be read a lot of different ways. We're trying to do our best and trying to get something together as quickly as we can.
Okay. In that light, you raised the page I had made some notes on, if I can, Counselor, just for, I was confused by that section on Page Eight regarding liability insurance. Made sense until, you know, the new section down below says, "The City Council may establish different insurance requirements for specified classes of users," you know, IG nonprofit. And it just raised me a question. If we, if we need liability insurance because of the event, why does it matter who's putting on the event? The exposure to the city, I assume, would be still the same, and that's what we're trying to mitigate?
Yes, we were, and that in part is why we asked to meet with City-County Insurance because this is actually an abbreviation of, your VCB director had gone through and had some recommended insurance levels, and, and I didn't want to put them all in the ordinance, so I kind of thought, well, we'll incorporate them by resolution. But the reality is, is we need to run those by City-County Insurance, and then they'll give us advice, and we'll make the decision we think is best for that, and then bring it to you. So, understandable.
And I saw the other one on Page Nine of alluding to and pointing out the Americans with Disability Act, and again, bringing that and incorporating that into the process.
Again, your VCB director and HR staff had just had an ADA consultant come in and recommended some language, and so, we wanted to get right on that.
Great, okay. Any, any other questions or from the reading of counselors? Now would be a time. I guess I say we just look forward to having it back again and after you've had your conferences. Okay? Any other, Counsel, anything?
Nothing further.
All right. Thank you.
I will ask that you not adjourn this meeting, but rather you recess this meeting and then go into a executive session.
All right. Well, why don't I, there are no resolutions. At this point, I'd love to take comments from citizens present, if anybody wishes to. Mr. Hunt, please come forward.
My name is Bob Hunt. I live at one-five-eight-seven Northwest Thirty-Ninth. And what I'd like to comment about is the city manager's conversation about this bulletin board that's on, it's an absolute waste of time. When I pop it up, I turn it off because we're loaded as a society with misinformation, and if it isn't right up to date, forget it. And what I suggest you do is, is that you do what the city manager talked about, is put a trailer so that when folks are watching this meeting and others, they know what they're looking at. That's cool. And I know that people do look, they do watch those meetings because every time I stand up here and testify the next morning or two, I hear from two or three people. So, at least there's two or three people watching what's going on here tonight. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hunt, I'm convinced that it's the Internet, though, not, you know, the cable. You know, we're an instant, instant community that they're streaming live and.
Well, yeah, watching on the Internet is just, is great for anybody that isn't old people. The old people don't have Internet. The young people, like myself, do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Please come forward. Gene?
In Scranton, A-one Beach Resort and Whistling Winds Motel. I would agree with Bob on that. I think it should be run twenty-four hours a day because, you know, you might get someone stumble across it. They're going from ABC to CBS. They might actually see something on there and get interested because you have to have a want to get on the Internet. You know what I mean? And it's, like you say, there's a lot of older people in town, people that don't have computers. And, you know, I talked to people, like I was talking to a cleaning company we deal with, and I said, what do you think about the meeting on the, on the, on February tenth about, you know, trying to restrict vacation around? They go, what are you talking about? You know, and so, I would be willing to bet you could probably walk up to anybody on the street in this town, they wouldn't have any idea what's going on in city government. So, I'm just thinking if it runs twenty-four hours a day, then somebody on their big screen when they're channel surfing might run across something and get some interest in it.
So, Gene, forgive me for interrupting you, but what you're endorsing is to continue meetings on the cable, Channel Four.
Yeah, I like the continuous meetings, and then somebody that's just channel surfing might pick something up and be really interested.
But the bulletin board, which was, probably has little value.
Yeah, terrible, I just blow by it. But if I see. But if I see a meeting, I tend to look at it, and I'm hoping some people in town, because like I say, a lot of people you see in town just aren't interested in city government, so.
Good, good feedback. Thank you. Any other comments? Please come forward. Deborah?
Hello, I'm Gabartson, Senior Planner. We're not streaming live tonight, as a matter of fact, but our IT person called the person, the company that puts up our streaming and said, "As soon as we get done loading it after the meeting, it will be available, probably later this evening."
Great. Thank you very much.
It does happen, but so far, we haven't lost any. Sometimes we've delayed it.
And that's what this would be, then, is to be able to click on and watch the rerun, so to speak. Great, thank you. All right, any other comments? Seeing none, then, gentlemen, if we could recess this meeting to go into executive session, we'll do that and then return as we can.
We're going to the Northwest Conference Room.
On record.
Thank you, Kathy. Let's reconvene the city council meeting. Thank you for your tolerance that recessed. Gentlemen, what I'd like to do is set this with, as you may recall, we had a Rhodes End Agreement, settlement agreement with the water district and sewer district and other individuals having to do with the annexation in Rhodes End. And we'd signed an agreement, all parties. There are certain requirements with that agreement that we're concerned aren't in full compliance on a timely basis. And so, looking to get ourselves comfortable that the districts are in compliance and moving ahead with their settlement obligations. Would like to encourage a motion that we can have our special attorney speak with them, take action with them, if that's appropriate. Mr. Appicello, you've got some wording for a motion that would deem appropriate?
Yeah, the suggestion would be that you authorize Dan Olson, your special counsel, to take action as necessary to enforce the settlement agreement if compliance is not demonstrated in a reasonable period of time.
And I would so move, Mr. Mayor.
That's the motion with a... Motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion with a second. Gordy? All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a no, hearing none. Thank you, gentlemen. That would leave us to announcements from councilors themselves. Any action, Wes? Anything going on in your world?
Well, actually, the transportation, okay, Lincoln County Transportation, Special Service District Transit, whatever. That committee I'm on that has to do with county transportation. It has a very long name, and I always... Lincoln County Special Transportation District Advisory Committee.
There you are. Okay.
Okay. Anyway, the big news is that they are hoping, and it'll be, it may not happen by the first of February, but it's, should be very close, Tillamook County, in cooperation with Lincoln County Transit, will be running initially, I believe it's two buses, from the Safeway north to Spirit Mountain, where people will be able to transfer to Salem, chariots from Spirit Mountain into Salem. So we will have bus transportation from Lincoln City to the valley. We already have transportation connections between Newport and Albany. We are working with Taft, with Lane County, as well as the, and I cannot remember the names of the tribes that have the casino in Florence, to see if we can close that 26-mile connection between Yahats and Florence with a bus, which would give then people access to the valley, to Eugene. We currently have transportation on Highway 6 and Highway 30 from the coast. With interconnecting buses, you can go from Portland down Highway 30, down the Oregon coast to as far south as Yahats. It's through a series of buses, but you can do it.
Yeah.
And the real thing that we have been working on, and we've been doing this, working on this for about three to four years that I know of, actively working on it, is this connection from Lincoln City to Salem because of the Amtrak. So...
And that's been the big gap, is that connection hasn't had a bus route?
No, it hasn't since Greyhound...
Yeah.
Well, actually, even Greyhound didn't go that way. They went to McMinnville and up to that way. So we've not had a bus from Lincoln City to Salem, in my memory.
Yeah. Now, and Wes, maybe, my memory may be wrong, I thought I heard him say that the weekdays, it's three routes, and weekends, two routes, or two, what would it be called?
Two round trips.
Round trips and three round trips, or something.
There was, there was some discussion, and I'll be very honest with you, I got a little lost on it. Initially, they indicated that it was two round trips, they hoped to expand it to four round trips, weekdays. There was some connection on the weekends, but I don't remember what the initial was.
Okay. But it's good news, because it leads to something that wasn't there. Gary?
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't going to say anything, and I should have actually called Wes, because I served on the same committee for a period of time, and I was curious why the bus hadn't started yet. Wes will recall that the people that came in while I was still on said that this would begin late fall of 2013, and of course, it didn't. And, so, sorry I didn't call you, Wes, because the most recent target date that they have, they're going to start on March the 1st. And if it starts earlier, that's great, but they wanted it to be no later than March the 1st. And during the week, Monday through Friday, there will be three trips, three round trips to Grand Ron and back. And on, because chariots that runs to Salem doesn't run on Saturday or Sunday, on Saturday and Sunday, there's going to be two round trips. But they'll go all the way to Salem. The bus will go to Grand Ron, and then all the way to Salem, and then come all the way back to Lincoln City. So I mean, it's, it's going to be great.
Yeah. Filling a huge gap.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else, either one of you?
No, that was it all.
We need to talk.
Chester?
More.
Thank you.
Mr. Spray?
Yeah, a couple of things. On the bus thing that he was just talking about, I happened to talk to a gentleman that took the trip from here to Portland, up Highway 26 and then that connection, and he just praised it, said it was wonderful. So it's working. And second thing is that our mayor has opted not to rerun for his position for next year, which leaves an opening in the mayor's slot for reelection. Mayor instead is going to want to represent the north end of the county as a county commissioner, and will be running for that position. So anyone out there who's interested in the mayor's slot should go to the county and get the paperwork, and, or actually come in, city clerk.
Until June.
Paperwork.
Yeah, in June.
Until June, but just to be thinking about it, and we'll need to fill that seat.
Well, if you could expand on that, because there'll be one seat in each ward for city council as well, so there are actually four opportunities, four seats, open this election year.
That's true. I wasn't worried about that seat, I was worried about the mayor's seat.
He's worried about it, too.
Exactly. Thank you, Roger, for all that campaigning.
Well, I thought I'd get that in there.
Gordy?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right. And Henry?
Nothing.
Geez, you guys are quiet tonight. Actually, I don't think I have, as a reminder for the Sleet Bay Music Festival, Aaron Meyer, the jazz violinist, will be here Friday night, 6:30, at the Cultural Center. And he'll be spending the day during Friday with Taft Elementary, going through music, and it's always a good experience. So if you're so inclined, music, wine, heavy hors d'oeuvres at the Cultural Center, 6:30, for price, of course. With that, anything else, gentlemen? We'll call it a night. Thank you.
Sorry, I was... She had to go.[1753.91]